President.
Andy Bertram, here. Dan Kader.
Here.
Scott Gergen.
Here.
Lisa Hedin.
Here.
Russ Roloff.
Here.
Superintendent Collins.
Here.
Terrific. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of both our January 18th regular board meeting, as well as the February 8th special board meeting?
I'll motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Can we have a motion to approve the bill's table?
So moved. Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. And with that, we are ready to move on to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't believe this needs to be an action item, but we talked at our last work session of moving board meetings to a six o'clock start and to our work sessions to a six o'clock start, so unless I hear any objection to that, that'll be the communication that Deanna puts out on our website. Is everybody still agreeable on that?
I was just, I am agreeable. It was that way 11 years ago, then we changed it to 6:30 for some reason, and now going back to six would be fine. But, you know, since that time, we've been putting a lot of like meetings between work and before. You don't feel like that will crowd it too much, or?
Yeah, I did think about that, but no, I'm comfortable.
Okay.
I know what you're saying.
The other thing would be to move it back even earlier.
Well, I might make.
And then never do that, never have the committee before the regular meeting.
I think part of it, though, is that I know that some of you have student athletes that are practicing, you have to get them home and have supper with them before you get them here, and I think that's why we stayed in at six o'clock, but otherwise, I would like your suggestion. We'll start out at six.
Say, it won't be daily.
Six a run.
Yeah, we'll start out with six, but yeah, I think as we found at work sessions and board meetings, as we start, if we have to do, go till nine o'clock, the effectiveness you start to wear down after a full day of work as well, so we'll go at six o'clock and Hastings Cable Community Television. I don't know if that's good for your group or not, but you don't have a choice, so. I guess I should have maybe checked in with you first, but we'll go with six o'clock then with our next work session, and I'll put that out in a email reminder as well. I just want to remind board members that during this legislative session, I was at a seat committee meeting, MSBA negotiations, et cetera, and there's a lot of discussion. This discussion has been there before, and that's the teacher retirement account being underfunded, and that legislation is the one that controls what that percentage is set at. And so, Kim probably knows it off the top of her head, what is it at, Kim?
Seven point five.
It's at seven?
Both, employer and employee.
Yeah, so both the employer and the employee contributes that into the T R A account, and part of the reason that T R A is underfunded at this time is people are living longer. So when they were doing their projections of what the contribution should have been 20 years ago, as people continue to live longer and get that benefit, they're starting to run out of money, so the discussion is that the legislators are going to increase it in this session, and that means that both the district and the employer, they're going to have to kick in the matching contribution, and what I've heard so far is that they might move it up to 9.5% over a four-year period, so that would mean a half percent increase each year for the district. You know, and I think the, it will be, it will be unfunded, because what they're going to do is they're going to say, well, we'll give you 2% on the formula, but by the way, you have to pay half a percent in the T R A match, so you really didn't get the full 2%, and so I just want board members to know that that is discussion that's going on, and the public to know, too, that that discussion is going on, so that I don't want the perception that 2% on the formula is 2% new money that we can spend on positions or benefits or salary. And I do think that they're going to have to do something. This has been talked about for the last two legislative sessions, and legislators have chosen not to go with that full increase, but I think they're going to have to from the projections that I've seen for T R A, and of course, I would like T R A to be there when I retire, so there's definitely some contributions that are going to be coming in in the next few years. Community facility update, I just wanted board members, and again, because we're being televised, I want to keep getting it out there that we have a committee of about 20 to 22 individuals, along with some board members, along with administrators. We met again last night from six o'clock to eight, along with a tour of JFK Elementary. Last night, the focus of discussion was on athletics and our athletic facilities. The other times, it's been on roofs, it's been on HVAC systems, it's been on safety. Very good meeting, again, but again, one of the reasons that I mentioned it is just to remind the community that we said that we're going to start looking to reinvest in our facilities, and we are. And that means the strong possibility of going for a bond this fall or next spring, as you know, the roof alone at the high school is probably 5.2 million, the HVAC at the middle school, which is still the original HVAC, is probably up around 28 million, Chiller at the high school, you know, 800,000, so good meeting. It just takes a lot of time to get community members up to speed. Our next meeting, two weeks from now, is going to be on the finance side now. What would it cost if we go for certain set number of dollars? And I know that Russ and Joe, you were there, too. Anything else to add?
Well, I think it was pretty, it was pretty good. I think it was, we did talk, Trent even talked about all the facilities, and Jim Ward even talked about the middle school facilities. I'd add that we're really guided very well by world architects. The chief architect who designed our high school was here, and he's guiding us every step of the way, so it's, you know, it's well done.
And he mentioned again last night, too, that school districts and communities have to reinvest in their facilities about every 10 years, because as you reinvest in the high school and the middle school, then next up will be McCullough, JFK, Pinecrest, Tilden, Roofs and Parking Lot, so that is the cycle that you need to stay in as a community to keep up with your original investment, not to mention the infrastructure that's needed for technology as well. So, very good that the group is hanging with us. It's two hours intense, it's every two weeks, and the members have kept coming, and it's going to be some really good dialogue as we get now into the, where the rubber meets the road with so much money, so much that we need to do, and that's coming up here in the next few weeks. I'll save the school district financial review till the end. I also want to let board members know that we did, I did go to a meeting with Jen Reichel and four teachers on Q Comp, as we're looking to apply for Q Comp, and for board members who don't know what Q Comp is, it was set up by the state of Minnesota. Originally, it was alternative, but it was by Jesse Ventura back in 2002, alternative compensation models, what he set with, you know, set the parameters as, and now it's a combination of your salary schedule adjusting to setting goals, in addition to the ability to hire a reading specialist or a math specialist to help your teachers reach those goals as well, and it's a combination of the state giving money and then the school district having the option to levy for it. One of the problems is that the state of Minnesota now has capped it, that they were only going to give so much to this program, and so now there are only so many schools that are in, and now the rest of us who want to get in. And so, we're looking to move forward at filling out the application, so that the day comes when the state of Minnesota does open up more money, we're now in line. But it's a lot of discussion that really the teachers have to have with each other as well. It has to be approved by the teachers' union, saying that we want to move forward with this, because it does tie into the contract, but I think what we've noticed over the years that other school districts have used it not only for incentives within the contract, whether it be financial or meeting goals, but their districts have also been able to hire some positions to help teachers become more effective and our sites become more effective, so I wanted to let the board know that I am in favor of us putting, you know, in the application, I am in favor of putting in the work, even though I know we might not get the money till down the road. I think this is very similar to where I told you as board members, long-term facility maintenance revenue, we had to wait about 20 years where we, everybody in the state now has this opportunity for the same equity. I don't think it's going to take that long, but we need to get everything, our Ts crossed and our Is dotted, and I know that Jesse was one of the teachers that was there with Jen and I on that day, so we're going to keep moving forward, so as board members. At some point, I'm hoping to bring that forward to you. The school district financial review, I just really want to keep it short, I'm not going to get into as deep as I would with, maybe at a work session. You have all seen some of these graphs before, but again, because one of the things that we're doing tonight in a motion item is use, I'm asking you to approve $500,000 in, up to $500,000 in reductions, it definitely ties into our overall financial view, but also as we look to the following year, we know as a board, too, that we could be making up to 2 million in cuts a year from now. And as I've said to you in work sessions, even though we have a nice fund balance of 12.8 million, somewhere in that range, it can go in a hurry as you continue to have declining enrollment, and you've heard this for many years from me, but this will, I always get asked, well, why is that? Why do we continue to have declining enrollment? And so Deanna put together a few graphs that I've shared at our facility committee, and then again, the impact of how it's so difficult to cut to keep up with that loss of revenue, so Deanna, you know, again, student enrollment drives finances, because so many of the state formulas are tied to how many students that you have. So as you have fewer students in your school district, you have less revenue coming in to operate your district, and that doesn't take into account that a football field, a basketball gymnasium, to heat this office, doesn't matter if you have 5,000 or 10,000, there's certain costs that don't change regardless of the number of students changing. So that continues to be a problem, and everybody says, well, why are we continuing to decline in Hastings? And this was a study that was done for us, women in their childbearing years continues to decrease. And so even though Hastings as a school district and as a community continues to grow, with more and more people living here, there's still fewer women in their childbearing years, so that's a sign to me that it's not like our enrollment's going to all of a sudden spike up or increase. I think this next graph, again, is just looking at it a different way. The median age of women in Hastings has increased because it's an aging population. So again, if it's not a community where you have a younger generation of females in their childbearing years, I'm not anticipating that our enrollment in kindergarten is going to jump up to 400, even though, Andy, you've been.
I lead by example.
Yes. Child number four, you've been trying to get us there, but it's going to take a few more. And then I always get asked the question, well, then it's so simple, just cut your expenses. If you have fewer students, just cut. And whether you use the word budget reductions, cutting, right sizing, downsizing, whatever word, I've used this in other, when we've gone out for operating levies, if you lose 100 students over a four-year period, and typically you get in about $9,000, you've lost $900,000 in that two-year period. And so, if each teacher teaches a set of 25 students, and I cut four teachers, because I have 100 less students, I then, we, have saved $248,000, but we lost 652,000 in that timeframe. And then two years from now, that happens again, and then two years from now, that happens again. And so, it's very difficult to make those reductions and right size and keep up, and you know that as board members, we've had these discussions at work sessions. So again, I share this more for the community who would be viewing, to let them know that even tonight, as you're going to make a motion to reduce, you know, 500,000 from our budget for the fall of 2017, you know, as that pattern happens again next year, it's probably going to be up around $2 million that we're going to have to reduce our budget by in the spring of this year. And then to be very clear, there are two separate budgets. One is for roofs and parking lots and windows and carpet, and we have to spend money on that, and the other budget, we spend on salaries and people. And sometimes people will say, well, I just passed a bond to redo the roof at the high school, and I just passed a bond to redo the parking lots and redo the HVAC, and now why are you reducing this spring? Well, that's a different budget. Just like your homes, you have to spend so much to do maintenance on your home, but you sometimes try to shut the lights down or turn the thermostat down to reduce your operating expenses. That's a different, although it comes out of your same checkbook. So there's a little difference there. So again, I wanted to be public about it, that we are making reductions, but I want to be public that it could be up to $2 million next spring, and that's a continuation of us being financially responsible as a board as well. So I didn't mean to end on negative news, but I wanted to be upfront and transparent about it.
All right. So with that, we're going to move on to the action item part of our agenda, and our first motion at hand is to approve the appointment of Peter Blissinbach, oh, good heaven, sorry, Peter Blissinbach, to fill the board seat vacated by Vince O'Brien until a permanent member is elected by special election to be held on November 7th, 2017. The vacated term expires the first Monday of January 2020. So to be clear, and then there's a note below that, oh, we'll cover that in discussion. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All right, is there any discussion?
I would just like to thank everyone that showed an interest and applied, and everyone was great, but it, I want to especially thank Peter for all the work he's been doing and all the interest he showed in the district, through his facilities committee, greater community facilities committee, which he's been serving on. So he's already up to speed on the bond question.
Terrific.
And he's an expert. He's got, how many kids in the school district?
Well, one.
Seven.
I would say, I think my understanding, and I don't know Peter or his family, is that he's a demographic representation of what we just saw of the population that's aging in place, and of his seven children, there's only one left in our district, but.
He's certainly done his share.
[laughing].
And I want to let you know as board members, I was a few minutes late because I was back there whipping him into shape on Boardology 101, and it took two minutes extra, but he's there and ready to go, and what I'll do after this appointment, then, I will put his email in the distribution list, he'll also be in ISD 200 list, and so although he officially, Peter won't become a board member until our next board meeting, he'll start being in on all my communication with you as board members, and I know that he's going to come to our March work session and join us at that table, so.
Right. And then just for purposes of clarity, and I think everybody at the table understands it, but for purposes of clarity, Peter's being appointed to take his seat in March, there'll be an election held in November. It is a special election, it'll be for the remainder of Vince's term of service. So when that election is complete, and whomever wins that election, that person is, completes all their paperwork, they wouldn't, they would be seated in that seat. So this motion, if you don't read it closely, feels like maybe Peter's being appointed for two and a half years. He's really being appointed until the next election. Do we have any further discussion? All right, so we have a motion in a second, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Welcome on, Peter.
Thank you.
All right, our next action item, motion to approve directing district administration to bring forward budget reductions of approximately $500,000 for the 2017-18 school year. Did I get a motion?
I'll motion. I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just want to share that, you know, for people watching a board meeting like this, we might not have a lot of discussion on this item, because at our work session, we spent a lot of time discussing it, our finance committee also spent an hour, hour and a half discussing it before we even brought it to the work session, so there's been a lot of conversation, and I know that whenever you have a group of six or seven, you know, board members, there's nobody that's going to say immediately that the 500,000 was the agreed amount. And so then through talking and consensus, we get to an amount that we're agreeable on, and I know that as we looked at the fact that we're going to be 1.5 million to 2 million over budget for this coming fall, how much should you cut then? You cut 500,000 of that, you cut a million, you cut 800,000, you cut 1.2 million, so we've had a lot of that discussion, and I think just for those who are viewing this or listening to it, I think Dan's analogy in the finance committee is that as we've asked our taxpayers to pass operating levies and give money for their children and their grandchildren to have education and keep, you know, class sizes as low as they possibly can and have as many electives, we need to respect that as well, and so if we have a $7 million fund balance policy, and right now we're sitting at 12.8 million or somewhere in there, as we get closer to that, we cut a little bit more aggressively. So we have a responsibility to both people who have children in school, we have responsibility to all the taxpaying residents, so we slowly make the cuts as we get there, but if it starts to go like this, and I think next year, we're seeing that it's going to start going like that, then we have to cut a little bit more aggressively, but that's also the beauty of us having a fund balance, is that we as a board have that option to make some of those cuts as we head towards that fund balance policy, because if we, over the years, if our community wasn't patient in the fact that closing Cooper Elementary, if they weren't patient, and redoing the district boundary lines twice, redoing transportation, where now kindergarten students ride with seniors, because of their patience and understanding of that and the money that we saved along the way, you as a board and I as a superintendent now get to make those decisions with a lot of discussion, where otherwise, Dan, you were there when we didn't have this ability to do this back in the early years. You would just come in here and you would say, there is no decision to make, we're cutting a lot right now, and it's impacting every student and staff right now, so again, I believe that you, as board members, you've done your due diligence, and we've had that discussion, and we've already brought recognition tonight that we know that this is just phase one of our process.
All right, is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve a reduction of $500,000 in the budget for 2017-18? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you, motion carries. Our next action item, our motion to approve the 2016 to 2018 Teamsters Local 320 Custodian Contract. Could I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
And this, this contract meets the same exact parameters that we've offered food service and that we've offered all of our other employee groups, and I thank them for meeting with me again and then bringing it back to vote again. I feel that their union steward and their junior leadership did a really good job of meeting with their members and saying, you know, this is a good offer, let's vote on it and take it, and I also met today, they also represent the community of Paris, I met with them this morning as well, and they're going to be bringing a vote on March 1st, and I'm anticipating a positive vote on that, and then all the contracts would be solidified. So again, I thank the leadership of this group for bringing it back to their members and saying, hey, let's vote on this again.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have a motion to approve the 2016-17 final staff seniority list. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? This was attached in the Dropbox, and I know it's gone out a couple times in draft, so I think everybody who's needed to give comment has.
Yep.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you, motion carries. Next, we have a motion to approve a change in assignment.
Who makes the motion? Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next, we have a motion to approve the retirement of two individuals. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you for your service, and thanks for giving us a heads up.
Yeah.
Right. Very true.
And Doug's been very good to work with, he's a teacher rights representative over the years, and he's done a nice job of, you know, out of all, a lot of the teachers, he's the one that comes in and meets with me on some, once in a while, we have a situation, and he's done a really good job of being patient and understanding both sides of the story, so I thank him for that level of patience and understanding to hear both sides of the story. It's been great to work with him on some tough situations at times. Not many, thank goodness.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next, we have a motion to accept the resignations of seven individuals. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next, we have a motion to approve leaves for five individuals. Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Then we have a motion to approve employment of a good group of, a good-sized group of people. Could I get that motion?
I'll motion. Second.
Any discussion?
Just, I know that Carrie Gore, Director of Community Ed, she'll now be starting, even though you as board members knew that we had made that hire, she'll officially be starting on March 1st. If you ever get a chance in the month of March to swing down there and say hi, that'd be much, much appreciated. So yeah, we're anxious for her welcome and starting.
Yeah. All right, any further discussion? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next, we have a motion to approve a national board certification for Laura Hammond, Speech and Language Pathologist at Tilden, for the American Speech Language Hearing Association Certificate of Clinical Competence.
Her theme's a sick color.
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, since you know what it means.
Yep, my daughter's halfway there.
All right, terrific.
You should do the second.
Get, yeah.
I can second.
Okay, thank you. That will go better. Do we have any discussion?
Just want to share with board members that in our teacher contract, you can get more money by step advancement, by lane advancement, and then. And then there's also a section for national board certification. And we, it's very tough to get nationally board certified. It's very, very tough. And so that's what this ties into. So if Dan's daughter is already halfway there, kudos to her, because it's a lot of work. And then once you get there, you have to keep, it's not just that you've earned it forever, you have to keep updating and reviewing and getting recertified. So congratulations to her for putting in that extra work.
All right, is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Under other business, we have some upcoming meeting dates, and I see that the times reflect the six o'clock. So I'll try and remind each other of that as it draws closer, so that we respect people's time and that we respect our own time.
I did tell Peter before we came in here that I like board meetings to be shorter than work sessions, but I didn't anticipate. Although I told Peter it should be an hour or less, didn't I, tonight? I said that we typically do a lot of our discussion at work sessions, and we come here and we do business. And once in a while, we have some items that we have to add on, and/or we invite in people to give presentations. So Peter, I was even more spot on than what I thought for this evening. But our work session in March will be quite lengthy. That'll be, you know, two, two and a half hours, and we have quite a few items to talk about this time of year, so.
You know, our contingent from U W R F, if you feel like you've been cheated, because this means.
If you want to hang around and just talk for two hours.
You can come back.
Or I was going to say, just come back to the work session and muscle that out.
Thanks for joining us.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you very much. Our final motion is to adjourn.
I'll motion. Second.
All right, I'm going to assume there's no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you very much, gentlemen.